All right, welcome to the City Commission meeting tonight. Thank you for coming out and I would just ask if you could please silence all cell phones and remind everybody that our meetings can be viewed every day on Channel 2 at noon and midnight and, sorry, 6:00 PM and midnight and available also on YouTube. And we'll go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance followed by Sound Fair.
(Inaudible)
All right, now let's see. We will start with the consideration of previous meeting minutes. There's no questions, we just need a motion.
I move that we accept the minutes of the meeting on February 13th.
Second.
Means been seconded there, we'll begin voting with Commissioner Batter.
Aye.
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 All right, motion passed 5-0. Item 2, Second Consideration Ordinance for number 8235, amending Chapter 28, nuisances of the Leavenworth Code of Ordinances.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, there have been no changes since first reading. We do have the city attorney here and I believe Julie Hurley is here as well if you have any specific questions, but there have been no changes since the first reading and no feedback from the public on this item.
Okay. Any other questions for anybody else? So then, just need a motion?
We'll call.
We'll call vote, that's right, thank you. Go ahead.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, 5-0 on there. New business, public comment. Let's see. All right, yep, so we'll go ahead and begin this section and if anybody has any public comment.
Mr. Louie Clem.
Okay, all right, so we'll keep these to two to three minutes long if we can and we won't take any actions tonight, but if you can, go ahead and just come up and state your name and address, please.
Yeah, somebody just mentioned I have six pockets to pop on, so if that's three minutes to pop, you have to take these with the max of fifteen, so that's why I made the hat on, makes me secure. My name is Louis Clem, I live in 1816 Pine Ridge Drive 913-683-0501. Just one person called, that's all I want, you know? If you're interested in your property tax, I'm sure what. Letter to the editor, may I read that article on 022024? It came from Andrea Hutchins. She is the CEO of the El Paso Chamber of Commerce and she was here. She had a beautiful article and it was talking about a belligerent to see Leavenworth seemingly retreat from the fray while the rest of the Kansas City metropolitan area has seen unprecedented commercial investment and other items. Wrote a beautiful article. I went to a meeting the other night and after the vote, the chairman said, oh, Mr. Clem, I can maybe use my name, he was, hey, you, did you want to say something? It was a Leavenworth preservation commission. I don't know how much we pay that company, that little girl, nice little girl, who gave a comment and she said MODOT is part of the program. That's what she told the committee, that group. MODOT isn't part of the program. They're insignificant. And they told me personally fifteen to twenty years before they ever developed one of their roads. That's a good point, but we still need to put a, what do you call it, on that bridge? Because once the bridge is done with its guarantee, who's going to pay for it? Well, that'd be interesting. So let's go on to the next topic. Website for traffic safety. It was in the paper and all of a sudden it said, oh, safety. I had talked to two different people about safety on 20th Street. I, and I think I've been mentioning to you and I did to the county, I finally found out what MFST means. It's mother something stop sign. Young lady told me that, she was saying I was number one, because she held her finger up at me, I thought that was nice. And when I stopped at her house and told her that's a very dangerous corner up there, she said, well, if you had stopped at the MF stop sign, well, I did, but there's a bad curb down there. Sixty miles an hour is probably what she was going, it says forty, but who cares? All my neighbors and people that use that road think that's a dangerous road, but nobody does anything but. The stop sign or the signs you can get to take the picture of the license tag, they don't cost a cent, they take a percent of what it costs. I was listening to the TV the other night and it was on, oh, there you go. I want to see what the subject was, and you can call the police and take me out here, but the subject was very important. It was what they're doing to the roads. This was Portland, Oregon. Tell them to get ahold of the director of the Portland, Oregon roads and find out what they're doing. They're the third worst in the nation and they've got a new way of doing it. So if that's not important, that's all right, but it is important to me and all the taxpayers. Let's take care of the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clem.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Is there anybody else?
There's not.
Okay. And we'll move on to general items, number three, mayor's appointment. And I do move to appoint to the Parks and Community Activities Board Marion Tennant to fill the Convention and Tourism Committee representative position to an unexpired term ending January 15th, 2026.
Second.
Motion has been seconded, we'll begin voting with Commissioner Hingla.
Aye.
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 Motion passed 5-0. Item 4, Resolution B 2360, annual report for stormwater 2023.
This will be Brian Faust, the Director of Public Works for this item.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. As mentioned, the item this evening is to adopt a resolution approving the annual KDHE report for our 2023 stormwater activities. As stated during our February 13th meeting, the city of Leavenworth is regulated by both KDHE and EPA as a phase-two city for stormwater purposes. The city is required to submit an annual report for our stormwater activities. The report summarizes the actions took in that year to protect and enhance stormwater quality. The draft report was reviewed by the commission on February 13th and is available on the city's website. No input has been received from residents regarding this report. The final report includes the statement that the city has reduced pollution in accordance with the requirements to the maximum extent practical. It is staff's opinion that the city has met the intent of the regulation to reduce pollution through the six minimum control measures. There is also a considerable amount of additional information in the appendices that will be included when the report is submitted. The report's about 99 pages long. We did not choose to include it with your package. The report is due to KDHE tomorrow via digital delivery, so we recommend the City Commission adopt Resolution B 2360 supporting the final report and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions, anybody?
No.
I really like that we are tracking, you know, tracking, tracking this every year and every year that I've been here. I mean, it's, it's been really positive, so I'm glad to see that. I know they require that, but it's, it's nice to see that for us to see it too.
Deal, with that, no other questions or comments, just need a motion.
I move for the City Commission to adopt Resolution B 2360, supporting the final report.
Second.
Question, the second, and we'll begin voting with Commissioner Batter.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed 5-0. Thank you. Moving on to item 5, Resolution B 2361, Section 8, Management Assessment Program, SEMAP, certification.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, tonight we'll be joined by Pat Thuley from the Leavenworth Housing Authority for this item.
Hello.
How y'all doing? Happy birthday, sir.
Appreciate it, man, thank you, sir.
Um, I'm just needing you guys to pass this, we do it once a year, it's kind of HUD's report card that we, you know, fill out, tell them everything that was going on and it's just a requirement that we do this every year. If you have any questions, I will tell you that the Housing Authority will probably see you more this year than we've ever had. HUD is changing everything over Housing Authorities, the computer systems, the way they do things and all that, so we'll be coming to see you guys to get updated admin plans and updated whatever else they want us to update through you guys.
Okay.
Cool deal. Well, thank you for coming, I appreciate that. Any comments?
No questions.
A question. Page 1 of 2, CMAP certification, page 2, number 8, it just doesn't have a yes or no. Is there supposed to be a yes or no checked off there?
Didn't bring it.
Page 1 or 2, where are you? What page?
Page 56 of the packet.
On page 2 of this, is that what he said?
Yeah, number 8, payment standards.
Oh, payment standards. Oh, it should be a yes, yes, sir, I will make sure that that's checked, the yes.
Okay, that's what I was hoping it was supposed to be.
Cool deal. Any other questions, Sid?
No, that's all I have.
Okay, excuse me, with that then we just need a motion.
I move to adopt Resolution B 2361, Section 8, Management Assessment Program Certification.
All right, motion's been seconded, and we'll begin voting with Commissioner Hingla.
Aye.
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 Aye, all right, cool deal, motion passed 5-0, thank you. All right, item 6, First Consideration Ordinance for Special Use Permit for Gas Station Use in North Neighborhood Redevelopment, Overlay District at 300 North Horse Street.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. As you said, this is a request for a special use permit to allow a gas station in the North Neighborhood Overlay District. This is for the existing Conoco gas station up here just north of the school district building. Gas station, the property is on R16, which is high-density, single-family residential, it's obviously an existing gas station. Gas stations are allowed in the North Neighborhood Overlay District in the R16 zoning with issuance of a special use permit. They do not have a special use permit. We've got all sorts of these existing non-conforming uses around town that can continue in perpetuity until they change something. So the owner of this gas station is doing a facelift, which I'm sure you've all seen starting, and as part of that, they're adding on to the rear of the building for a cooler area for beverages and that type of thing. And so the regulations just require that if you add on to an existing non-conforming structure, that you come into conformance, and so in that case, this would mean getting the special use permit. So nothing's really changing with it, they're updating the look of the building, adding on that small cooler space in the back, and then this special use permit will just get them into conformance to continue. So the planning commission did hear this at their February 5th meeting and voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of the special use permit, and staff would recommend approval based on the analysis and findings included in your packet, and if you have any questions, I can answer those for you.
Thank you.
Is this still going to be a Conoco station?
I believe so. One of the planning commissioners did ask about that, and I don't believe they have changed the branding of their station.
So why not for it? Because we need, North Leavenworth needs places where you can get hopefully some groceries as well as cold drinks and stuff, so.
Yeah, so they're, they're doing a pretty major overhaul on the building, it should be pretty nice.
Yeah.
Cool deal. I do not have any other questions on that, guys? Thing down there? Okay, and we just need a motion.
Actually, this is a consideration.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yep, as well, okay.
Okay.
Cool deal. Thank you then. Item 7, First Consideration Ordinance for Special Use Permit, 920 North 14th Street for two-family dwelling in R16 zoning district.
Okay, thank you again. As you said, this is a request for a special use permit to allow two-family dwelling in the R16, single-family zoning district. This is currently a vacant lot, it's about a quarter of its current size. There was previously a two-story, single-family home on the lot that was demolished in 2009. Two-family dwellings are allowed in the R16 zoning district with issuance of a special use permit, and the individual who has purchased this lot is just requesting this so that he can build a duplex on this property. He hasn't submitted any site plans or building permits yet, but any house that goes on to this property would need to meet all applicable development standards in terms of setbacks, lot coverage, parking, that type of thing. So this is just to allow the use of a two-family dwelling. And again, the planning commission heard this at their February 5th meeting and voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval, and staff would also recommend approval based on the analysis and findings included in your packet, and if you have any questions, I can answer those for you.
Do you have to notify a neighbor's on?
Yep, so statute, state statute requires that we notify neighbors within 200 feet of any special use permit request. We did that and did not receive any comments or inquiries.
Okay. Thank you.
Cool deal. Other comments?
No, I'm good with it.
All in favor of it?
I'm good with it.
All right, good to go, okay. Then, item 8, First Consideration Ordinance Development Regulations Text Amendments.
Okay, so thank you again. This is our annual review and update of our development regulations. The regulations were adopted in 2016 after a year-long comprehensive update process. This annual review is undertaken by staff to ensure that they remain up-to-date and comprehensive. The bulk of the updates that are included are mainly to ensure consistency throughout the document, to make sure they're aligned with other city codes and ordinances, building permits, that type of thing, and to clarify regulations. Sometimes there's language in there that as we're using it on a day-to-day basis, we just find that it's not really clear, and so to clean that up. So some of the changes also come from feedback we get from the public as they're working through these. Some items might be because we have repeated things that are going to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and so we take a look at that, okay, maybe this is something that we should be allowing by right if we're getting this many variance requests. So again, the bulk of these updates are basically housekeeping items, clarifying, consistency, that type of thing. I will just hit a few that are actual changes to what we're doing. In Article 4, which is the zoning districts and standards, we are adding a provision to allow three detached accessory structures on parcels that are two acres or larger. It's a blanket requirement that you're limited to two detached accessory structures, so that could be a shed, a detached garage, a shop, any, anything like that. We're finding on these larger parcels in town, folks have more of a need for detached structures, and we're getting quite a few variance requests for those, people who have, you know, more room to have a shop or have more requirements for equipment to take care of their larger property or have a property large enough to keep a horse. If you have a, you know, a barn for your livestock that you can have, that counts as one of your accessory structures. So allowing another accessory structure by right on those larger parcels instead of having to go through a variance request process. And then, in Article 5, Access and Parking, we are adding a provision to allow alternative parking materials as acceptable parking surface for single-family dwellings. Right now, you're limited to concrete or asphalt, and we're finding as technology changes, there's a lot of options for people in terms of, you know, previous pavement, pavers, that type of thing. So we worded it in a way that any of those materials would have to be approved by Public Works when they come in for their building permit, but just giving folks that option to use some alternative materials as the technology allows. And then in Article 8, Regarding the Signs, we're adding a provision to allow wall signage for businesses without an exterior wall that fronts a public right-of-way. The way the regulations are worded is that if you're going to have a wall sign, your business has to be basically fronting that street that it's on. We have some cases where there are businesses that are internal to a multi-tenant building that maybe don't front a street, and so just allowing them to have that wall sign that fronts a street, again, without having to go through a variance process to get something that they really should be able to have in order to advertise their business.
Cool.
So those are the main changes that are, again, are actually changing something that we regulate. The rest are, again, pretty much housekeeping, but if you have any questions, I can answer those for you. The planning commission did have their public hearing on this at the February meeting and voted unanimously to recommend approval.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I wondered on Article 5, I saw that and it was like, alternative TV materials, that's conglomeration.
Lot of options out there, so just wanted to kind of open it up for people to bring something to discuss.
Sure, that's good to know. Cool deal.
Are you, I saw the section on tiny houses, are there, are you seeing more applications for those?
Um, that's not one of the changes, I think that probably just got included there, but yeah, so we, we have not had any actual building permits come through for them. We've been getting inquiries from folks on a lot of these smaller lots that are up north. Even some of the larger lots, people are interested in building tiny homes, we haven't had any constructed yet, but we are seeing people interested, so it's, it's getting there, and I, I would think that we would start seeing them pop up.
Just curious.
That's good. Any other questions from anybody?
No.
Nothing? Just need a consensus on this as well?
Yes.
Your favorite, huh? Yep, all right, cool deal.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item 9, First Consideration Ordinance, Amending Chapter 2, Article 2 of the Leavenworth Code of Ordinances.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, the commission provided consensus at the January 23rd study session to formalize the current practice regarding the annual selection of mayor and mayor pro tem. In addition, revised ordinance before you sets the swearing-in of the commissioners at the first regular meeting in December following the election. The city manager's office and the city attorney have prepared the revised ordinance to reflect those changes in city code, and it's on first consideration tonight for your approval. And the city attorney is here if you have any questions.
Okay, any questions, comments?
No, I read through it, I like it.
That was very clear, clear the way it was worded, so I'm glad, that was a little bit confusing.
We had to do a little bit of, had to do a little bit of math, you know, typing and then making notes on the notepad, like, wait, does that line up right? But we got there.
Thank you, thank you for that.
Cool deal, when it, when we just needed a consensus as well?
Yes.
All good, yes, yep. Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Waters on that. Okay, we'll move to staff report for Camp Leavenworth Feedback Session.
Turn this over to our Assistant City Manager, Penny Holler, to introduce our, not a really guest anymore, part of the team.
I just have a couple slides. All right, here in commission, we are seven and a half months out from Camp Leavenworth on September 20th and 21st. I'm confident we will turn around and we will be the week of Camp Leavenworth before we know it. So we're really getting to the planning for that. The purpose of today's session is to provide a recap of 2023 and to provide a time for questions and feedback from the commission. As Paul mentioned, Kelly O'Neil Wenzel, our event manager, is here to help us with feedback and questions as well. So just as we get into this, you'll recall the purpose of Camp Leavenworth was to draw people to Leavenworth and to celebrate the city. Ideally, this is becoming a known event, that's what we were hoping that this would develop into, and we've seen that happen. We're the first city, so we like items that are unique and try to find areas where we can lead, and this is certainly one area that it seems like we're doing something that no one else is quite doing in this format. And this is also an opportunity to celebrate Leavenworth and share our community with guests. So we're hoping that not only our community gets to enjoy Camp Leavenworth, but that will have a regional draw for folks who come join us for this. And I know several folks invite family members, take the opportunity, it's a good time to come check out Leavenworth, we hear that a lot as well. So I'll just give a few highlights of some of the key items that are really becoming the known expected items for Camp Leavenworth. So the fireworks on Friday, the music lineup, the 5K run-and-walk, the food trucks having the food on-site, various activities, I have a couple listed, balloons, camp crafty, the bounty house, the smores, the silent disco, and then the craft vendors. We've received a lot of positive feedback, in recent years especially, from just sort of some of the changes we've made to the schedule and highlighting some of the items that we have, as well as the music lineup. I think the direction from the commission has been sort of reach different audiences with what music is provided, so it seems like that has been well-received. These are the items we think are the most likely to draw the numbers to Camp Leavenworth. And then, we also have the new elements from 2023. So that was the 360 photo booth, that was the local brewery's involvement, that was the local dance performance from the First City Dance Center. That's where we tried to have a tie-in between the 5K run-and-walk in the morning and really kind of kicking off the afternoon, so the dance event and starting the music really kind of kept people on-site, that didn't just leave after the 5K, they stuck around, enjoyed part of the festival. And then, the CVB and Main Street worked together on the information booth, and they offered a scavenger hunt, which seems like that was well-received. They had a small sticker and prizes for the kids that completed that, so that was really good partnership. We found that brought foot traffic to the CVB to get information, Main Street, restaurant, retail, so that was something that we added in 2023 that seemed to have gone well. We did an after-action review, and I have a list of a few of the items that we'll be looking at for 2024. Obviously, the weather. We had probably the most perfect day on Friday. We had 3,000 people attend Friday night alone, which was really just four hours. The weather was perfect, the fireworks went well, the music lineup seems like it was well-received. And then we came to Saturday morning, where we had a little bit of unexpected weather for the 5K run. We actually were pretty lucky in that, and from what we understand from other events, they had more serious damage and it made papers in other places. So we had to wait a little bit, we had to delay the run, but we were able to hold that, and it was a safe event, so that worked out well. And then in the afternoon, a lot of us got together, that was working with the county emergency management, that was the city manager's office. That's our trained, professional event management team helping us through that. Police, fire, really had to kind of put our heads together as we knew there might be a chance for worse weather and say, well, we know we have some items that are high, so if there's wind or lightning, that's going to be problematic. We also know our vendors, you know, are here trying to do their best to be there, but they also don't want to have their merchandise get blown everywhere, and they want to be open where people are going to show up. So we made the tough call to go ahead and end the festival early, which I think it ended up to be a nice afternoon, but it's one of those, the call was made for safety. So definitely weather-dependent, there's not a whole lot you can do, just sort of adjust as needed and bring the team together and kind of make that, make that adjustment as needed. So that was probably the number one. The 5K run-and-walk, again, that was just weather-impacted, some of the chance of weather impacts number of sign-ups, so if we have a chance- So we made the tough call to go ahead and end the festival early, which I think it ended up to be a nice afternoon, but it's one of those, the call was made for safety. So definitely weather-dependent, there's not a whole lot you can do, just sort of adjust as needed and bring the team together and kind of make that, make that adjustment as needed. So that was probably the number one. The five K run-and-walk, again, that was just weather-impacted, some of the chance of weather impacts number of sign-ups. So if we have a chance for good weather, we may see greater attendance for the five K run-and-walk. There were some activities that were supposed to be planned for the event that didn't happen, so some of our military partners had some activities that they were going to bring to the event, which at the last minute, they weren't able to make happen, so we had to do some reorganization adjustments. Hopefully, no one noticed, but that was a little bit of some hiccups that we had, is it's great when you can have those and they don't cost the city anything, maybe not ideal when they don't show up and we're trying to adjust that at the last minute. So we're reviewing our partnerships with them and seeing what we can do for the next year. And then we keep hearing all-ages items, so trying to meet the various needs of lots of groups. So we continue to look at that. And then sponsorships. We saw a pretty good sponsorship level in 2021, we had Melissa Etheridge, and since then, having kind of a different music lineup, we just really haven't seen as many sponsorships come in. So that's just something we're aware of. And if the Commission has, you know, ideas on groups or businesses to reach out to, we always put our heads together and kind of come up with a list and do that outreach, but, you know, any assistance we can get with that is helpful for the festival. And then here's where Kelly and I would say, don't hold us to this, but this is just some items we've been creatively thinking about possibly for the festival, as we always want to keep it new and fresh, have items that are quality, that meet the theme, and that's just something new and different. So last year, we talked about the idea of some sort of, if we could pull it off, a downtown map with maybe some notable locations and it's part of a mini car racing, so folks can maybe compete, that could be teenagers, that could be kids, that could be adults, that also familiarizes them.
Mini, mini.
With, with the downtown. So we were partnering with Main Street to kind of put that together. We weren't able to pull it off in time for last year, but we're going to see if that's not something we can bring to the festival this year. And then we've talked about having a small stage, whether that's for demonstrations, whether that's for something music-related. So we're certainly seeing if that might be something we have for the main stage and then another area of activity that could be a draw for different audiences, so that's being explored. And then we did see a lot of presence of people with ADA challenges. I saw a lot of wheelchairs come into the festival, which is really great to see. It tells me we got some great flat space, we have open access, we have wheelchair-accessible restrooms. So it's kind of a thought of, is there some sort of activity that we could designate just to include folks that might be a fun activity to have? So those are just some of the items we were kind of looking at. I would say some of the most fun items we've had on here, the five K, Leavenworth Arts doing the chalk art, the dance troupe, and the three sixty photo booth, were all local folks who approached us and said, hey, we have this idea for an activity. We were able to work with them and make that happen. So maybe not an information booth, but if there's an activity, if there's a community group that wants to get involved, we'd love to hear their ideas on what we could possibly add to the festival. So encourage them to reach out on that. And then that's, that's all my slides, I feel like I've talked enough. We have, you know, Kelly here, who really is the expert in events, to take your questions and to capture your feedback on the event.
The one thing I heard was about the, the beer tent and the using, using one organization over the last two or three years, and is there a way to switch that around to where there's other organizations that can run that instead of just having one benefit?
Yeah, I think we've always used the spouses club out of, yeah, so I would just say, if that's something of interest, we could certainly look at it, there's only one. So it's, we could do one day or the other and how do you pick? And so kind of due to the theme of the event and what we were trying to do, one of the goals originally when we put this together was to have a way, because a lot of the military families move in in August, so to have an event that sort of welcomes them to the community. So that's kind of why we tied that in, but certainly open to options. We know that that's a great, they make the tips, so to your point, it's a fundraiser. We felt like that was a neutral, easy one, but I think that's something we could do, we could look into.
Okay, thank you.
I thought the dance performance was excellent because they were moms, grandparents, granddads, uncles, cousins, and it's a big crowd. I think the scavenger hunt was a great idea. I would also like, I'm not really understanding the many-car thing, so they're not really cars.
It's more like toy cars, like, so that they could.
Anything that we can do to get, I know it's hard to do because the festival's down here, but the biggest complaint I get is that we're not incorporating, and I know you guys get this every year, we're not incorporating all the downtown businesses. So things like the scavenger hunt and things like a map to get them to the festival, out into eating in restaurants, even visiting the stores while they're in town would be great. I think that I would like to see a big name again. I think when you have a big name, not necessarily Melissa Etheridge, again, because I know she's on tour, but you're going to get sponsorships. I think one's going to come with the other. And then Lansing did their Fall Festival and they had simple little kid rides, but they were amazing and the kids were lined up for an hour to go on this little Ferris Wheel thing, so.
Including me.
Including, yeah.
My kitty land.
Yeah, I think those are going to bring in more people.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Yeah, we've actually looked at that and I'm glad you brought that up because we talked about it again, and we've reached out to every vendor that we have and because of your date and the amount of events around, we've had a challenge finding them. They're booked out years, they're kind of the annual events and so even though smaller, there's one company and I'd be curious to see who they use, but.
I think you use Fund Services.
Yeah, unfortunately, we call them every year and say, how can we reserve just one or four of those? And every year, they deny us because they're booked at some other event that they have every year. Fund Services is who we use for the others, so we, we get what the left is left, but I'm with you. And we've even talked about a carnival, I mean, I think, you know, those carnivals are nostalgic and, and being in a, in the town that you are. Those too are pre-booked pretty far out and they're very expensive to bring and change, but certainly we'll keep looking and if you guys know of anything, please let us know. Because I do think those, those are cute little rides.
Right.
We've had them at several of our events and they're great, it's just how do we get them?
Yeah.
We've always had issues around the carnivals and we've had those in town. In fact, it seems like our, our events that we had, our River Fest and our Buffalo Bill Days and all that, that it was, everything was pretty smooth except around where the carnival was. So carnival for little kids is great, but I don't.
Yeah, and they have these great little rides. I know exactly what you're talking about and they're, they're for littler kids.
That'd be good, that would be good.
What about, just out of curiosity, because you guys got me, my juice is flowing, like, pop-up pony rides, petting zoo areas.
That is such a good idea. That is on our list. We've already reached out and we have one reserved, but we are looking at a petting, petting zoo. Again, we like to keep it fresh, so we kind of take on all the things, realize what budget we'll do and what could we swap around. You know, we've talked about anything with skates, like, it's really challenging to get that teenage, right, that teenage age happy at these events. So certainly the silent disco does keep that age very entertained. We've looked at, you know, like a BMX bike demo, which are really great for everyone to watch, but they're kind of expensive, so we're kind of weighing a few of those different things to see which one do we bring in this year to, to see, but that, yeah, so we're in the same line. We think a petting zoo could be really fun.
You know, I saw something recently, something that one company had done where basically they incentivize their customers to promote them and they're like, oh, I wonder if there's anything, like, if you like us on Facebook, share this YouTube or whatever, you could be, you know, I don't know, some type of incentive there to get the public to share more about it and create more press. I don't know if you guys have looked at anything like that in the past or not, but if there's even a possibility this time around, but.
Yeah, you know, one thing we, I don't believe we've done, maybe during Melissa Etheridge we did, but there are kind of online contests for that, so if you like the city page, our page, this page, our sponsors page, you get entered to win five things and then you get this big gift. So as I'm thinking out loud too, that might be a great way to get the merchants to come in with a big grand prize and potentially we share that as kind of something incentive for the, like, merch at Camp Leavenworth plus dinner at all these places, so that's a cute idea, yeah.
Cool.
And one last thing, I was contacted by a local, they have a local music store, Mighty Five Music, and they have put together a list of locals bands.
Great.
And so I've given that to Paul and Penny, I believe have that.
And I think they just shared it with me and we, yeah, we just talked to the local booking, or booking agent and he's excited to see those, to look at that.
Yeah, we've seen work talk on that, so that makes me happy that you're happy.
Yeah.
Have you looked at having a big headliner for that Saturday or, when I say big?
The answer to that is no, because that's not the direction of the Commission. The Commission actually went the other way, so if, if you wanted us to do that, that would be something that you would need for us to change that direction and pursue that, because we have not since Melissa Etheridge. And that was mainly the direction of the Commission.
If there's an upcoming artist that we, like, that, that has a big name, that can pull people.
You know, I think what we saw last year that we did try, I think that was a great formula based on what we're seeing as more of the community, is we did those, more of the cover bands, so we did an eighties kind of Friday night, we were going to have Summer Breeze, I believe, on Saturday night. Love to have them back because they didn't play, but that plays well to all audiences well, and it did do well. To your point of drawing in visitors, yeah, I mean, that's, that's certainly the direction to go, to draw in visitors. I think the Commission, if I remember, it was more like, we need to actually build the local community stronger for a bit before reaching back to that, because really Melissa drew in a ton of people, but.
You could always have locals one night and a big headliner the next night. I mean, or not, I'd say big, uh.
A regional.
A regional person. I mean, I think if you want people to stay here overnight and stay in our hotels.
Yeah.
Eating at our restaurants on Sunday morning, then you're going to have to have someone who's big. I was not on the Commission, so I did not have that voice last time, but for my voice, I would like to see somebody more regional, to see that. Just, I don't think our hotels were full last time.
No, yeah.
I think if we want it to be full and we want to get people in town, we have to have someone a little more popular.
And I think this is where I'll give some advice from my event hat from festivals right now. The trend we're kind of seeing is music got, after COVID, it got really priced high for these festivals and events, and so we are, we are thinking it's about a year before we're going to see those come back down. So investment, we're really struggling with some of our major festivals in Kansas City because that price isn't worth the year free, but that price has not been balanced. We're seeing it, we're, we're feeling it, it's going to start to crash back down, but I think for sure, that's, that's, that's what draws people, but it is a trend we're seeing amongst all festivals, like, and that's why a lot of them are trending to these all, like, the cover bands.
Right.
If you notice it, look at most of the bars and stuff that you'll see cover bands are more, then they're booking these, so we're just watching the trends, but certainly look at it.
So one thing I wanted to speak to is more so teenage activities and I think you're moving in the right direction. Sports. I know that we have a big, strong sports presence in our community. Is there anything that we can probably add to that could attract teen, teenagers, more like a three-point shootout contest? That, and then also even like a local teenage talent show, like for one particular night. Because I know doing talent shows, you know, they're going to bring their friends, they're going to bring their families, that's also going to attract people to come out to support them as well, too.
Great, I like that.
That'd be a good one for the small stage.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's a great idea. I like those.
Question? This is a big anniversary year for the city of Leavenworth, yes?
Hundredth anniversary, well, a hundredth anniversary of City Hall.
Okay. Okay. I was thinking, you know, the historical society, the Leavenworth County Historical Society probably would not mind being able to set up a couple of, I don't know, stations where folks could talk about Leavenworth.
Yeah.
You know, for folks, I mean, it wouldn't be a moneymaker, it's probably not going to draw anybody in, but it's going to let people get to know a little bit more about Leavenworth and gee, maybe I should come back up, that kind of thing.
Yeah.
You know, it's just something to, maybe contact the Leavenworth Historical Society and see if they'd be interested in getting their own names out there, too.
Maybe at the demonstration stage.
Yeah, that's where I was just going with that, that demonstration stage. You know, you want to make sure they're interactive, so even if they could provide even something creative in the kids area, you know, some way to kind of engage with the story usually helps, but yeah, I think that's great. These are all good ideas and I think what's wonderful is we want to hear them because it's your city, you know, and see what we can implement that's realistic each year.
Mr. Mayor, I might add that the Westwood, annual Westwood View Elementary School Carnival, the hottest ticket item is the Dunk of the Mayor.
I bet there's a dunk tape still available.
Just seen the consensus, Department has the dunk tape.
Gets lots of people interested.
Oh, we borrowed from FMWR, but yeah.
They also have that Fund Services, so I'm sure they have that available.
They have everything.
They have everything, yes.
So if we wanted to do that, I need to take a bunch of people off for that before we do it, right? Get more people to come.
I mean, it could be mayor and commissioner, I mean, we could play with it.
Yeah, we support you.
No, that's cool, that's good.
I did want to make sure I circled back because there was sort of the thought to look at a headliner and that would be a little bit of a change-up from what we had last year, which was a little more variety, well-balanced. Am I hearing that there's interest to consider sort of more of a major act, is that what we should start looking into and see what's available?
I'm, I'm a solid yes, but I don't know everybody.
Yeah, I think we turned away from that because, because we needed to involve our local businesses more in.
Can't we have both? I mean, there's two nights.
I know, but.
Well, there's the financial side too, right? What was the impact financially from?
It's pretty significant, you know, you would have to look at, but we would look at a few thirty to fifty thousand dollars just for one act that would have a name draw.
That was something like forty something, yeah.
But your local brands are, I mean.
They're not going to.
They're not going to cost you much.
Mm-hmm. So yeah, that's the, that's the change.
I'm open to exploring it, we don't have to land on it, but just to see who's out there.
This year, it's too late, so.
Do you think it's too late?
No, not necessarily. I mean, you know, you really just look at it, it's a, you know, you could, if you can get them routed, meaning they're going on a circuit and they happen to fit and it works well, so to your point, we could certainly look at our person and say, hey, if you hear of anything that happens to be coming through that could be at a better price than just paying, like Melissa, we asked, but she significantly reduced her ask because she likes Leavenworth. But that was a one-off where you pay and they just come in and out and those are much more pricey.
Yeah.
So we can certainly look at it if there's an opportunity that seems to make sense, but even still for future, next year, if it doesn't work out this year.
We've got, you know, in our own, I mean, I'm thinking of Kansas City, Kansas City area, people who are from Kansas City who are well-known. I mean, if you had Eric Stonestreet come in and do a comedy routine, I mean, that would be kind of cool, I think that would draw a lot of people, too, you know?
Different talents.
Or Paul Rudd or somebody, you know, that's local, that's been local. I mean, Eric grew up here, so.
I was going to say, Eric's sister was here last year. Yeah, I mean, usually I use them more in a MC role, like where they're, they're introducing and engaging with the crowd. Eric would be great with that, it's just if he's in town and he'd be willing and I do have some connections to him as well, so.
Yeah, I didn't know if he did.
The other ones are pretty much, they don't really.
He comes back quite a bit, his mom, so.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
So outside of this information we've given you, what else do you need from us?
Nothing, just keep sending the ideas our way.
Okay, all right.
It's great.
Cool deal.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you all.
I think it's great and, you know, it just keeps getting better. Yeah, thank you, guys.
All right, well, thank you for that. We'll move on to last item here, Revenue Overview Presentation.
Turn this over to Roberta Behr, our Finance Director.
We're already getting the.
I just want to just briefly state, this is, we showed you all the budget calendar and we want to do a few things different this year and this is sort of the unofficial uh we wanna do a few things different this year, and this is sort of the unofficial start to the budget season uh by doing an overview of city revenue. And so I'm gonna turn it over to Roberta um to talk about uh this item as we start gearing up for the twenty twenty-five budget.
And a little accounting, too, like you said.
And a little accounting, too.
Roberta, if I stand up and walk to the back, I hope you don't mind.
So this is, this is.
I'm not walking out on you, I'm.
This is fairly dense information, it's one of my, gonna be one of my longer presentations, but I think it's incredibly useful information as we move into the budgeting process. We talk a lot about expenses and we don't talk a lot about the revenue that support those expenses.
Right.
So I do encourage you to get up and walk around, um. I also encourage you to stop me if I start to lose you. I'm gonna move through these slides quickly. Uh there's a lot of information on the slides I provided to you, so that you can take them home and read them more thoroughly. I'm not gonna say every word that's on every slide, but there's something you want me to dive more into, or if you need me to back up, you have any ques- questions, just interrupt me and um and that'll be good for everybody, it'll wake us all up and and we can enjoy the next few slides more. So um as uh as Mayor Martin mentioned, we're gonna have a little accounting in this presentation, which makes me happy because that's my favorite thing in the whole wide world. Um the table of contents, what we're going to cover is first, we're gonna talk about citywide total revenue and how that translates to net annual revenue. We're gonna have a little fund accounting discussion. We're going to talk about the revenue and all of the different funds. Um and then we'll have a discussion about sales tax, ad valorem tax, and I've got a recent brief analysis about how tax um has changed in comparison to inflation and wrap it all up with a conclusion. So we all know that the city has several different revenue sources. And added up in twenty twenty-three, our actual citywide revenue was sixty-four million dollars and twenty twenty-four budgeted revenue is a hundred and three million dollars. But that's not really accurate because there is a lot of revenue included in those numbers that's not really generated in the, in that specific year. We're gonna back those numbers out to get to net annual revenue. So net annual revenue is a term that I've coined to describe revenue that is generated during the fiscal year. We're starting with citywide total revenue and we're going to back out internal service revenue. So that's when one fund performs services for another fund and bills that fund for it. We're also going to back out bonds and temp note proceeds. Governmental accounting says that we have to consider the sale of a bond as revenue in the year that we receive the proceeds, but we have to pay that money back in future years, so we're not going to consider it part of net annual revenue. We're also gonna back out intercent- intercity transfers. Uh some um like the sales tax funds collect money and transfer to other monies. That's considered revenue on one side and an expense on the other, so you end up double counting revenue, so we're gonna back that out. I'm gonna spend a little bit more time talking about balance forward. Balance forward is a revenue component in our budgets and reforecasts, and it's equal to the projected unencumbered cash from the previous year. Balance forward is considered a revenue in a budget because it's available to cover budget year expenditures, but it's not generated in the budget year. Uh budgets also include budgeted reserves as an expense. So you have your balance forward as your revenue and your budgeted reserves as an expense. Many funds have targeted budgeted reserves amount. And the year one budgeted reserve, so twenty twenty-three budgeted reserves, becomes twenty twenty-four balance forward, and that's gonna become important later in the conversation, which is why I wanted to take a minute to talk about it. The first thing we're gonna break out from total annual revenue or back out is the service centers' intercity revenue. The the service center buys gas and diesel and sells it to other departments, other funds, and they also repair uh perform services and repairs on city vehicles and bill other departments for that. That was eight hundred and twenty thousand in twenty twenty-three and eight fifty-four budgeted for twenty twenty-four. We're gonna back that out from total revenue. We're gonna back out that four point five million dollar bond that's budgeted for the fire station, and we're gonna back out eleven million dollars in intercity transfers in twenty twenty-three and thirteen million point five in twenty twenty-four. And finally, we're gonna back out that balance forward number. Just wanna take a second to point out the fact that there is no balance forward in twenty twenty-three because that's only a budgeted item, it's not an actual revenue item. So we're backing out these four types of revenue, and we're gonna end up with fifty-two million dollars of actual net annual revenue that we're gonna discuss in the rest of this presentation, and that's fifty-three point nine million, fifty-three point eight million in budgeted revenue. Now we come to our little accounting lesson, I'll put my little teacher hat on. So the city's required to record its financial activities in separate funds, and each fund has its own balance sheet and income statement. And you can kind of think of it like the city is a corporation and all of these funds are the subsidiaries and they all report up to the city, right? Fund accounting is really essential for governments because maintaining separate funds makes sure that the money that is generated for a specific purse purpose is actually used for that purpose. And that's what all these different funds help us do. So we're required to have certain types of funds. The first is a debt service fund, which is exactly what it sounds like, that's where we pay, uh make our debt payments. Our capital project funds is where all of our CIP activity is recorded. Special revenue funds are funds that are um have a restricted or committed revenue for specific purposes. Examples would be like the recreation fund or the probation fund. We have enterprise funds, um those are the funds where a fee is charged to external users for goods and service, our sewer fund, our refuse fund, and our stormwater fund. We have four fiduciary funds, two of them are um employee benefit funds, so that would be our two pension funds. And then we have two custodial funds, which are the library funds. And finally, we have the general fund, which is the catch-all where everything else happens that's not in one of these other funds. That's the basic definition of the general fund. So in twenty twenty-three, our budget included thirty-six funds. General fund, a debt service fund, four capital project funds, three enterprise funds, four fiduciary funds, and twenty-three special revenue funds. And I'm sorry to tell you that this conversation is going to talk about every single one of those funds, but this isn't as hard as it sounds because the first thing we're going to consider is we closed six of these funds in twenty twenty-three. Funds sometimes outlive their usefulness, and then when they do, we close them and we move on. Hopefully, we won't open anymore. So the six funds we closed, first, we closed the special projects fund and moved the money that was in that fund to the Streets Capital Project Fund. We closed the nine-one-one fund, and now the general fund is collecting the nine-one-one fees and ascending those to the county to support the dispatch center. We closed the tenant-based rental assistant fund because we're not renewing that grant. We closed the Blight Elimination Trust Fund. That fund hasn't had activity for several years, and we transferred uh its balance to the Capital Project Fund. We also haven't had any activity in the um Community Grants Fund for several years. We transferred that balance to the Streets Capital Project Fund to help pay for the Wilson Avenue Project. And the final fund that we closed in twenty twenty-three is the um Housing CFP Fund. That's part of Planters Operations, and uh we just rolled it into the Planters Two Fund. Um Commissioner Wilson, do you have a question?
No, you're good, I I called up to you now.
Okay, okay, great. I don't wanna lose anybody.
You see my face.
Yes, I did, we got a long way to go. Okay. So the elimination of those six funds narrows our discussion down to thirty funds. We saw on a previous slide that our net annual revenue is fifty-two point three million for twenty twenty-three was actual revenue and fifty-three point eight million, so they're the budgeted revenue. Those six funds that we closed had a hundred and seven thousand dollars in revenue. And what we're gonna do is we're just gonna sort of peel away the onion, right? So um if you look at my little counter box there, you'll see now we only have to talk about fifty-two million dollars. Yeah, it's gonna get easier and easier. Alright, next, we're gonna consider the fact that the revenue source for several funds is not fungible. The money that is received in that fund must stay in that fund for the purpose of the fund. The um the funds are what I would consider self-sufficient, so without the revenue, there would be no fund. So we're gonna peel those away first. The first one is the Police Seizure Fund. The revenue source for the Police Seizure Fund is confiscated evidence during an arrest. That, those funds must be used for public safety expenditures. The next fund we're gonna peel off is the Police Grants Fund, and the only revenue in that fund is federal grants to purchase public sa- police safety equipment. The third fund we're going to peel away is the Community Development Fund. The only source of revenue in the Community Development Fund is HUD grants for the, for the programs that you see on this line. The next fund we're going to peel away are the TIF funds, talk about this for just a second. All of the taxes that are collected by the TIF funds must be used to reimburse the developer for allowable costs. If the, if the TIF agreement ends after the developer's been fully reimbursed and there's any remaining TIF funds, then the city can use those funds to improve the TIF district. But any money that's, that's earned in the TIF district must stay in the TIF district.
Kinda had a quick comment on that.
Uh huh.
We, we've talked about this for, and some other things that, you know, it's important to remember that those are, I treat those somewhat as like a pass-through, they show up as revenue because that money comes into you, but you flow it right back out to the TIF, you can't use it for anything else, so that's exactly kind of what she's saying.
It's almost like the library.
Why we peel that away is that sure, it shows up as, okay, wait, is our budget this higher, but this much amount? Well, if you've got a new TIF, for example, that money is just new money coming in, but you're not able to use it for anything other than to pass through it out.
Thank you. The next one we're going to talk about is the Planters Two Fund. The primary revenue source in the Planters Two Fund is a federal HUD grant and the revenue rental that's collected from the tenants. There's some ancillary income that's related to running an apartment building, but all the money that is uh generated in that fund must stay in that fund. And then we have the voucher choice fund, similarly, it's a HUD uh grant program um and all of the revenue that's generated in that fund must stay in the fund. So uh we just peeled off eleven, eight more funds, which narrowed our discussion down to twenty-two funds. And there are a few more special revenue funds we're gonna peel away for various reasons. The first is the CVB Fund. The primary source of revenue in the CVB Fund is transient guest tax, which is collected specifically to promote the city's tourism and marketing activities, and there's some ancillary revenue related to Camp Leavenworth, which we just heard about. Those funds can't be used for anything but their intended purpose. The Streets Fund receives revenue from the state, the highway connecting link money, and the motor fuel tax. That money is use-restricted to uh street repairs and maintenances of streets and alleys, so it's not available for anything else for the city. Next, we have the Special Park Gift Fund, which receives donations and admission fees for pack productions, and that revenue is restricted to expenditures for pack productions and other special community events such as Jazz in the Park. The Business Technology Park is a little bit different, it doesn't have any revenue in it, but that fund still exists because there's leftover money from the development of the park, and we're using that for the annual maintenance until the um park is fully occupied. The ARPA Fund is unique, and I'm gonna just take a second to talk about that. Um all of the grant money was received in twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, but ARPA guidelines dictate that any unspent grant money must be recorded as unearned revenue. What that means is in the ensuing years, when we have expenses, we actually record that unearned revenue as earned, and it'll show up as income in our income statement or revenue on our income statement. So in twenty twenty-three, we had one point seven million dollars in expenses, and we had the exact same amount in revenue. It's important to note that the city commission is one that authorizes all ARPA fund expenditures. So we've peeled away a few more um funds, and we have one self-contained special revenue fund left, and that's a probation fund. I, I separated it out from the rest because even if it wasn't a separate fund and we didn't have this unique revenue, we may still provide these services. So the probation fund has two primary revenue sources. It receives one-third of the liquor tax that the city receives, and it receives fees for service. That includes fees we charge participating Leavenworth County cities, and I believe next year, twenty twenty-five, we're only going to have one. And it also includes a direct service fees paid by individuals using the probation services. All of the money earned in the probation fund has to stay in the probation fund. So now that we have peeled away the special revenue funds, um we are going to talk about the enterprise funds. And just a really quick reminder, enterprise funds are used to report activity for which a fee is charged. They support themselves by definition. And it's also important to remember that enterprise funds do not receive any tax revenue. So the sewer fund's primary revenue source is fees for service. We establish those fees every year as part of the budget process, they can be raised or lowered um depending on our budgeted expenditures. And those revenues are used to report the operation of the sewer fund and also to uh make capital outlay purchases. It's very important to remember, if you can look at the bottom here, that budgeted, that the um sewer fund generates sufficient revenue to uh support a budgeted reserves for operations and a capital reserve for a replacement of the wastewater treatment plant components, equipment, sewer lines, et cetera. The refuse fund is similar, very similar, it's got revenues, uh fees for service are its revenue source. Those support operations of the, of the refuse program, and it's used to um replace capital equipment. And the refuse fund also um keeps budgets a reserve. So you see the one point two million dollars, that's the budgeted reserve, that will be the beginning balance in twenty twenty-five during the twenty twenty-five budget, you'll see that as a revenue line item. Stormwater is same, same, different, different, um it doesn't receive any tax revenue either, um but its primary revenue source is the stormwater impact fee that we assess all homeowners and businesses in the city. Those revenues are used to repair and replace the city's aging stormwater infrastructure. Sometimes we allow a balance to grow in budgeted reserves if we know we're gonna have a future-year project that is more than the current-year earnings. So the final thirteen funds to be discussed are the only funds that receive ad valorem property tax and sales tax. So we've peeled off every fund that doesn't receive um either uh ad valorem property tax or sales tax. And this discussion can be simplified a little bit more by combining like-kind funds. So I'm gonna combine like the capital project funds into one group. I'm gonna combine the sales tax funds into another group. We're gonna combine the two pension funds and the two library custodial funds. The first group we're going to talk about are the pension funds. So the Police and Fire Pension Plans closed to new entrants in nineteen seventy-one, and we still have three pensioners remaining in the plan. The plans are subject to an annual actuarial analysis, and the actuaries recommend the targeted reserve levels. The funds are supported by ad valer- ad valer- ad valorem tax, and for the last several years, the plans had an operating deficit, so in twenty twenty-four, we had to increase the mill levy to get enough money into the fund to satisfy um its, the actuarial demands. This plan also receives motor vehicle tax. What you're going to see in every single fund that receives ad valorem tax is there's a corresponding motor vehicle tax. We'll talk about that more later, but I'm not gonna mention it with every fund that has the ad valorem tax. Next, we have the library funds. As I mentioned earlier, that's a custodial fund, the city levies a tax on behalf of the library, and then we collect the taxes and transfer them to the library. The library is funded with ad valorem property tax, and the mill levy is determined by the library budget, which is approved by the library. the library budget, which is approved by the library's board of directors. The next is the sales tax funds. Here we start to get a little bit complicated, but I think we can all follow along here. So the sales tax funds collect all of the sales tax. They there's no direct expenditures in the sales tax fund. We transfer that money to the Capital Projects Funds, the Debt Service Fund, and the Recreation Fund as needed. In addition to the sales and use tax, the sales tax fund did have the sale of some assets in twenty twenty-three. And occasionally, after we transfer money to, say, the Capital Projects Fund for a project, the money that we think we're going to need, if it's not all used, it'll get transferred back to the sales tax fund so it can fund a future project. And that's why you see transfers of six hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars in the sales tax fund in twenty twenty-three. All right, we just talked about the sales tax fund and said we collect sales tax and transfer it into other funds, and the Capital Projects Fund is one of those funds, are one of those funds. There's three Capital Projects Funds. The we use the Capital Projects Funds only to track projects, C I P projects. While the primary source is the transfers from the sales tax fund, the Capital Projects Fund also receives F F D funds every year of about a half a million dollars, and those are reimbursements from the state of a portion of the previous year's streets project costs. The city regularly applies for state and federal grants. We're trying to do more and more of that, and next year we have three, three grants that we budgeted for. Kind of an anomaly here is the sale of assets of three hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. That's a new thing in the Capital Projects Fund, and it's come about as a result of our Enterprise Lease Fleet program. So the enterprise enterprise sells regularly sells our fleet vehicles, and when they do, the proceeds from those sales go into the Capital Projects Fund because that's who we are tracking the the entire project. In twenty twenty-four, we have the four point five million dot million dollar bond budgeted in the Capital Projects Fund. Next, we're going to talk about the Economic Development Fund. City Charter Ordinance Number Fifty-four pledges a portion of the countywide sales and use tax to the Economic Development Fund, and the City Commission has determined the amount that will go into that fund is fifteen percent. There is an odd item, miscellaneous income of eighty thousand dollars. When I was doing these slides, I'm like, what is that? That must be a mistake. Well, it wasn't a mistake. We paid for something, and it was actually the buses for the vehicle program in twenty twenty-two, and we received a refund in twenty twenty-three, and that's why it's miscellaneous income in twenty twenty-three.
And Roberta, real quick, I'm sorry, back when your capital projects, the sale of those assets, those are those are vehicles actually have been fully depreciated and everything like that?
No. So so it is very interesting. So the first thing the enterprise project did was sell the vehicles we already owned, right? And then we got the proceeds from those vehicles. Then we started leasing vehicles from them. We might lease a vehicle for a year. When we lease a vehicle from Enterprise, they set up a depreciation schedule and an amortization table, et cetera. And then, let's say, they sell it a year later. They almost always so far have always sold it for more than the book value of the vehicle. So if they're carrying the vehicle for forty thousand on their books and they sell it for forty-five, we get the five thousand dollars.
Okay.
So so the selling point for the program at the very beginning was the sale of these vehicles will compensate for the lease cost of the vehicles, and the program will cost you less than owning vehicles. I myself was skeptical. It's turning out to be very true. I think life to date, we've been in the program for three years, we spent a net of less than fifty thousand dollars on leased vehicles after the sale of the vehicles. That also we keep in mind that they sold a lot of the vehicles we already owned. So the next few years, I think we'll get a better picture of what the true net cost is, but we are tracking that very closely.
Cool, thank you.
You're welcome. It's very interesting. Hit the wrong direction. All right, so we talked about the Economic Development Fund. Those funds need to stay in the Economic Development Fund. The Economic Development Fund does have a pretty healthy reserve, and that money may be used for projects that are larger than the annual revenue in the fund. We then have the Debt Service Fund. The city has thirteen outstanding general obligation bonds that are unrelated to the enterprise funds. The enterprise funds service their own debt. Nine of those bonds are serviced with ad valorem tax revenue, and the annual mill levy is calculated to cover the annual cost of the debt to service those nine bonds. In addition, there are four bonds that were issued to fund C I P projects, and they're serviced with transfers from the sales tax funds. The Debt Service Fund also receives a portion of the, oh, I wasn't supposed to say that. We already talked about that. Okay.
I think that's actually a good point on that last slide where, you know, your debt service remains constant on that, and as appraised values comes up, your mill levy goes down to make the same amount. I think that's a good point to show.
Okay, so we have the Recreation Fund, which receives a portion of its funding from the ad valorem property tax. Recreation Fund receives a third of the city's liquor tax. Eighteen percent of the revenue in the Recreation Fund is fees for service, admission fees, rental revenue. The City Commission approves the fee schedule for the Recreation Fund, and I was trying to point out where we have some control over future revenues, so fee schedules go up. The Recreation Fund could generate more money to help support itself. And the balance of the revenue that is needed to operate the Recreation Fund comes from transfers from the sales tax funds. And oh my goodness, we peeled everything away except for the General Fund. Yay, okay. So the General Fund is the fund used to account for and report all financial resources that are not in another fund, right? It's the catch-all. Because of this, a General Fund has more sources of revenue than any other fund in the city, and it also accounts for the majority of the city's expenditures. As we've been watching the little counter, you might have noticed that we got down to twenty-one point nine million remaining of net actual revenue for twenty twenty-three, and that matches the revenue in the General Fund. So we're going to talk about the rest of the revenue in the General Fund. We're going to start easy with the intergovernmental revenue. The General Fund receives one-third of the liquor tax received by the city, and it receives those nine-one-one fees we talked about earlier. Remember, we closed the nine-one-one fund and put it into the General Fund, and those fees are transferred directly to the county for the dispatch call center. Next, we'll call talk about licenses, permits, and fees. Again, you you the City Commission approves the fee schedules every year. We have licenses and permits that are issued by the city clerk's office, the fire department, inspections and planning and zoning. Fees for service include our cops and schools program and our billing, Police and Fire Department billing to the Pioneer Group. Interested in admin service charges? Our city clerk is responsible for earning the admin fee for managing the transient guest program, and the enterprise funds pay admin fees to the General Fund. And the bonds and fines are the revenue generated by the municipal court. Miscellaneous income is primarily our interest earnings on our investments and checking account balances. We have some minor sale of assets in the General Fund, and miscellaneous income is everything from the sale of electricity at the airport to insurance reimbursements to animal surrender fees, et cetera. So now we've discussed all of the general rep fund revenue except for tax revenue. We just keep peeling it away, right? Starting easy, again, I always like to start the easy stuff first. Special assessments are created when a code enforcement mowing fee is not paid by the end of the year. At that point, the fee is added to the owner's property tax bill as a special assessment. Take a second to talk about franchise fees. We have five different utilities that pay franchise fees in the city, and those franchise fees are reliant on usage, which is often determined by the weather, and I've learned personally that they're difficult to budget. Year-to-year trends are not very reliable. So in when I was doing, when we were doing, working on the twenty twenty-four budget, we had to reforecast twenty twenty-three first. I looked at the trends between twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, we saw a thirty-nine percent increase. Between twenty twenty-two, the first part of twenty twenty-two, and year to date twenty twenty-three, we saw a twenty-four percent increase. So I said, well, this is fun. I'm just gonna assume we're gonna have a similar sized increase. Well, lo and behold, the twenty twenty-three actual revenue was just a three percent increase, and therefore it's very, very likely that we've overbudgeted for twenty twenty-four. Again, these franchise fees are largely can largely, especially electricity and gas, are based on weather.
Sure.
Mother Nature has more control than I do. We have the motor vehicle tax. I promised we would visit that. We receive motor vehicle tax based on the assessed values of the vehicles owned within the city limits. That motor vehicle tax is allocated by the county to all of the funds that receive ad valorem tax in the same percentages. Do want to note that there we've been seeing a downward trend in motor vehicle tax collections. So we're to sales tax. I think we most of us know that the city has a nine point five percent sales tax rate, which is comprised of the state's six point five percent sales tax, a countywide one percent sales tax, and the two percent city sales tax. All the cities in Leavenworth receive a portion of the countywide sales tax based on the percentage of population and taxes levied compared to the county as a whole. And I know when you get home, you're going to examine that little box and do the math and it's because that's pretty fun. But um, so so the sales tax we receive is countywide sales tax that is divided between the EcoDevo Fund and the Countywide Sales Tax Fund. We receive city sales tax, our two percent city seal city sales tax is divided between the General Fund and the C I P Sales Tax Fund. And the city and we receive city and county use tax. One hundred percent of the use city use tax goes to the General Fund, and then the countywide use tax is divided the same way as the countywide sales tax.
Use taxes, internet sales.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Any any sale that ends up in Leavenworth that was actually purchased outside of the city limits? Thank you. So this is just an overview of the taxes we received in twenty twenty-three, because I think it's easier if we talk about real numbers. So in twenty twenty-three, we received city sales tax of ten point six million, and it was allocated between the General Fund and the C I P Sales Tax Fund. We received two point seven million of county sales tax allocated between the Economic Development Fund and the Countywide Sales Tax Fund. One hundred percent of the two point four million city use tax went to the General Fund, and the county use tax of one million dollars was divided between the Economic Development Fund and the city countywide sales tax fund. And in twenty twenty-three, we collected sixteen point nine million dollars in sales tax. So the question is, we're talking about this because we're getting ready to budget for twenty twenty-five, and how do we need to consider how recent sales tax trends are going to impact the twenty twenty-five budget? To do that, we have to start with, how did we come up with the twenty twenty-four budgeted sales tax numbers? The first thing we did is we looked at the seven-year average increase per city sales tax, and it was three point five percent. I then looked at the last two and a half years, the most recent trend, and it was almost five percent. Based on those numbers, we decided to apply a three point seven five percent multiplier to the twenty twenty-two sales tax collections to to determine the twenty twenty-three reforecast, and we use the same multiplier to to develop the twenty twenty-four budget, which this calculation resulted in eleven point four million being budgeted for city sales tax in twenty twenty-four. The actual city sales tax for twenty twenty-three was three hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars under reforecast. Our actual twenty twenty-three city sales tax is only zero point one four percent over twenty twenty-two. The next piece of data we have as we're thinking about twenty twenty-five is the money that we've collected this year. January's city sales tax is five point one four percent lower than we collected last January. We use the same logic for all four types of sales tax. You can see the trends here for the countywide sales tax. We used a four percent multiplier to get to the reforecast and the budget, resulting in three million dollars for twenty twenty-four budgeted countywide sales tax. Actual countywide sales tax came in a hundred and sixty-six thousand under reforecast, and it was actually lower than the tax that we received in twenty twenty-two by one point nine two percent. January's countywide sales tax is six point eight five percent lower than the same month for last year. The use taxes are going up more rapidly. People are buying more and more stuff on Amazon, online, et cetera, and you can see these bigger increases. We decided to be conservative, and we used a seven percent multiplier for the reforecast and the budget, resulting in two point five million dollars being budgeted for sales tax for city use tax for twenty twenty-four. We got pretty close on this one. Hooray, she got one right. And the actual city use tax was only twelve thousand under reforecast, and you can see the six point four eight percent was pretty close to what we reforecast. As of January twenty twenty-four, the city use tax was six point six seven percent more than January's, which again was pretty close to the to what we budgeted. Countywide use tax, you see these large increases. We budget a six point six percent multiplier, resulting in one point two million in budgeted county use tax. It came in at four point one two percent over twenty twenty-two, which is twenty-five thousand under reforecast. The twenty January twenty-four countywide use tax was seven point three percent more than last year's. So I've got to put a table together so we can add this all up and see what it looks like in real life. We reforecast seventeen million. Our actual was a little bit lower, it's sixteen point nine million. The difference is five hundred and eighty-six thousand. We collected five hundred and eighty-six thousand less than what we thought we would. That's and our actual change over twenty twenty-two for total sales tax was only zero point nine one percent, well under inflation. So we talked about cash reserves, and this is why I talked about it earlier, because I wanted you to think about how this collecting less money this year impacts next year's budget. So as we said, the cash reserve from twenty twenty-three last year will impact the beginning balance for twenty twenty-four this year, right? So we determined that I underbudgeted, we underbudgeted franchise fees by a hundred and forty-seven thousand. Well, that's just gas franchise fees. And we underbudgeted sales tax by our under reforecasted by five underperformed by five hundred and eighty-six thousand. If you add those two together, those differences would cause our twenty twenty-four, this year's beginning balance to be seven hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars less than budgeted, and obviously that carries forward to twenty twenty-five, right? But fortunately, the declining sales tax trend was just part of the picture, and other revenue sources more than made up for that. Most of that was interest earnings, and our citywide twenty twenty-three actual revenue was approximately two hundred thousand over reforecast. So we established on the previous slide that our beginning balance for this year was not negatively impacted by our citywide twenty twenty-three revenue performance, but what happens if these sales tax trends continue? As of the production of this slide, I only had revenue this month for one month, and that was January, and it came in two point eight nine percent under budget. Today, at about four o'clock, I got an email from the state telling giving us our Today, at about 4 o'clock, I got an email from the state telling, giving us our February numbers. The February actual total sales tax collected was 5% under last year's February. So as of year-to-date 2024 through February, we've collected $120,000 less than we collected in 2023. That's a downward trend of 4%. I made little copies for everybody. So I just wanted to update you with the latest and greatest information.
Roberta, I'm sorry, you said it's year-to-date, right?
Year-to-date, we're 4% under performance from last year through February on combined sales tax.
Thank you.
So we kind of talked about all of this already. So my point is that we're going to need to consider this trend while creating the 2025 budget. Prior to the end of the budget process, we're gonna have data from four more months. We might see an improvement, and it will, it will cause us to be less worried. And this trend might continue, in which case, we'll have to figure out how to alter the budget to make up for that. I created this slide, or I included this slide. It is a visual representation of what we just talked about. You can see, I'll get a little pointer here. You can see between 2019 and 2020, a pretty significant growth in sales tax. Between '20 and '21, you also see a big growth. At 2021 and '22, you see that growth. And then 2023, that line kisses the 2022 line. What those gaps are equivalent to in 2020, 2021, and 2022 is over 6% growth in sales tax from year to year.
You're asking why?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so just briefly, and Roberta can hit on this too. So the answer is sometimes is you don't know. Here's what you think. It was COVID, nobody traveled, prices were up, more household income, people spent their savings, and you saw purchases go up. So you saw sales tax go up. And so that's what we think, and that's what helped us last year, was we had budgeted a smaller number, and so sales tax came in higher. But now we're seeing a return back down.
So what it equaled in dollars is in 2020, we collected $885,000 more in sales tax than we did in 2019. In 2021, we collected $917,000 more than we did in 2021. And in 2022, we collected a million more than we did in '22 than we did in 2021. That averages $950,000 more in sales tax from year to year. And to put it in perspective, for 2024 budget, that's equivalent to 3.13 mils. So we've discussed special assessments, sales tax, franchise fees, and motor vehicle tax. And the commonality between these types of tax, and what Paul just said, is we don't have any direct control over the amount of tax we will receive. We budget these revenues, we analyze trends, current economic conditions, and we try to predict how much tax we will receive. And that's, the difficulty is compounded by the fact that the budget process starts so early in the year. In fact, we've already started the process for 2025.
Two quick notes, on February, the data we just got this afternoon, it's not only below the 2024, it's not just below the February 2023 number, it's actually below the February 2022 number. The other note on that is when Roberta says we're down 4% or so year over year, that's really like 7%, because it's if you take to what you forecasted. So if you forecast 3.5%, and you're below 4%, then you have to add those together. So that sort of compounds the problem.
Okay, so the last form of tax that we have to talk about, the remaining revenue for the city is ad valorem tax. Ad valorem tax is unique in that the city commission determines how much ad valorem tax the city will levy during the budget process. If you were familiar with the Kansas Budget Books, you would know that they are designed to have ad valorem tax cover the gap between all other budgeted revenue sources and the total budgeted expenditures. I'm just gonna go over fairly quickly the process for ad valorem tax, because I think it's important. The county appraiser's office appraises all of the properties within city limits and assigns an assessed value based on these multipliers. Last year, total assessed value was $304 million. Those values can increase or decrease. Several things impact assessed values going up. One of them is the increased appraised value of existing properties. My house was appraised for $200,000 last year and $300,000 this year. So I saw an $11,000 increase in my assessed value. New construction also increases appraised values and assessed values. So if a new subdivision goes in and generates, there's 10 houses for $100,000 each, that's $1 million in additional appraised value in the city. Extensive remodelings can impact assessed values positively, and a change of use. So we have agricultural property that changes used to residential property that will increase the value and the assessed value of the property. Assessed values can decrease. Occasionally, the existing structures decrease in appraised value. Structures can get removed from a property, or a change of use from maybe commercial to residential may decrease the value of the property. So anyway, now the county's appraiser's office has appraised everything. They have an estimated assessed value. They inform the city what that assessed value is. And from that information, we calculate the value of a mil, which is 1/1,000 of the total assessed value. Last year, a mil was $304,000. Well, it's this budget year.
I think one of the interesting points on that that gets lost is that you don't really set a mil levy so much. Everybody talks about the mil levy. Going through the process that she's talking about, you determine how much ad valorem tax you need, then that gets translated to a mil levy. But that's what you actually, when you sign your budget books, you're actually establishing a dollar amount.
That's correct. And then because the assessed values could go up or down, and then the county commissioner determines how many actual mils. So the budgeting process determines how much ad valorem tax, the amount that we need to balance the budget while maintaining targeted reserve levels. In 2024, the General Fund gap was $4.5 million. Therefore, the General Fund required 14.795 mils to balance the budget. The city commission decided to reduce the city's tax rate to 26.978 mils. Our total mils that we recommended was 27.397. This lowered the General Fund tax levy by $127,000. And in order to maintain a balanced budget, budgeted reserves were lowered by that same amount. So we really need to talk about how impactful are changes in sales and ad valorem tax to those funds? Remember, there's not very many funds, there's 12 funds that receive this type of revenue. If you look here, you see that the funds that receive ad valorem and sales tax revenue, that's the majority of their revenue. And in some funds, it's 100% of the revenue. So if the combined total of ad valorem tax and sales tax don't keep pace with inflation, then expenditures in those funds will need to be reduced in order to balance the budget. So the next few slides are comparing both sales tax and ad valorem tax to inflation. In this slide, the bars are our sales tax. And you see a big jump from 2014 to 2015. That's when the voters approved an additional 1% sales tax with the sole purpose of reducing property tax. So I'm gonna talk about trends only between 2015 and 2023. Obviously, 2024 is budgeted, so we're not gonna talk about that. During that period, inflation was an average of 3.41%. The brown line you see, this line right here, represents what sales tax would be, starting with 2015, and applying CPI to that amount every year. You can see, with the exception of 2016 and 2017, they're below the line. The rest of the years exceeded inflation. The growth of sales tax was greater than the growth of inflation. And in fact, sales and use tax has increased an average of 3.58% a year since 2015. So now I've added a green line, which represents our actual ad valorem tax levy. You see the dramatic drop in 2015? That's when that sales tax was added. And indeed, we replaced a considerable amount of our ad valorem tax with sales tax, starting in 2015. Since 2015, ad valorem tax has increased at an average rate of 3.13%, which is less than inflation. But I want to take a second and talk about those improvements, right? So assessed values go up due to appraised values increasing and new improvements. If we back out those new improvements, we're actually gonna see the true increase in ad valorem tax since 2015. And that number is 1.58%, which is two full percentage points below inflation. So in summary, we started this presentation with 2023 actual and 2024 budgeted total revenue, and backed out the revenue that is not generated in the current year to determine net annual revenue. After determining net annual revenue, we discussed the self-sufficient special revenue funds and enterprise funds. And after backing those out, we had 12 funds left that receive ad valorem and/or sales tax. The funds that we see here are the ones that receive ad valorem and/or sales tax. And you can see, I left them in their groupings, right? There's four pensions funds, two library funds, et cetera. Once we back those out, we get to the general fund annual revenue of $22 million. We then discussed all the non-tax revenue sources in the General Fund. And we determined that the General Fund tax revenue is 83% of the total General Fund revenue. Of all of the tax revenue, ad valorem tax and sales and use tax are the largest components of tax revenue. Since 2015, sales tax revenue has outpaced inflation. We talked about the fact that in 2020, 2021, and 2022, we had over 6% increase in those three years, generating an additional $950,000 a year. In the same period of time, ad valorem tax increased at a rate lower than inflation. After removing improvements, the average annual increase of ad valorem tax in the city of Leavenworth was 1.58%. It's important to note that ad valorem tax increases were lower than inflation, because as property values went up, the mil levy went down. Together, the two types of taxes have kept up with inflation since 2015. Sales tax outpacing inflation allowed the city to keep ad valorem taxes low. For the first, last half of 2023 and the first month, now two months of 2024, the increase in sales tax collections has slowed down considerably. And total sales tax collections as of the end of January were 9.1% higher than 2022.
0.91.
0.91% higher than 2022. Thank you. Again, I think we've pointed this out before, but it's worth repeating. We don't control the amount of sales tax received. The best we can do is analyze trends and current economic conditions and use that to determine the 2025 budget year's sales tax collections. If sales tax collections don't improve over the next several months, we will need to make a downward adjustment to the 2024 reforecast, which is going to impact our 2025 beginning balance. And we will also need to be cautious when we budget for 2025 sales tax. So in conclusion, in order to maintain the current level of services the city provides, revenue must increase at least as much as inflation. If sales tax continues its current trend, we'll either need to increase other revenue sources or reduce services that the city provides. The two revenue sources that the city has direct control over are fees for service and ad valorem tax. I threw in a little blip in here about state and federal grants. We could receive more, or we can apply for more state and federal grants, but that's all we have control over, what we apply for. We don't have any control over what's awarded. It's also important to remember that grant revenue is almost always project-based, and therefore doesn't support operations. In addition, grants often have a matching component, which diverts city resources to the projects that receive the grants. During the next several months, we will collect additional sales tax data. That data and recent trends will determine how much sales tax we budget for 2025. The amount of sales tax that we budget for 2025 will determine whether or not we need to increase a different source of revenue or decrease expenditures by reducing the services the city provides to its residents and businesses. And that's it. You all survived. You have any questions? I know it was great that you asked them as we went along, thank you.
Did you bring any certificates? Because I think we all just got our.
I will make you certificates. I think that's a great idea. That was worth one hour CPE. Towards your accounting.
That was really good. Makes sense.
One question I had, and you were on a roll, Roberta, so I appreciate it. Back to the General Fund miscellaneous income, page 53. You projected interest earnings to be at 360 for this year, which is, you know, about 1.5 something million down.
Yes, and that is probably under-projected. I don't need to go all the way there. I know that that is, yeah, it's a very, so we only budgeted 330,000 in interest revenue this year. So it's sort of the opposite of sales tax, right? We were earning very little interest throughout the pandemic. Interest rates were very low. And then all of a sudden, in 2022 and 2023, interest rates went up. You know, from our previous discussion about investments, we've been aggressively managing our investments to get as much interest as possible. I do expect us to learn less interest in 2025 than 2023, because we're spending down our reserves. We've had that ARPA money in the bank, that's gonna get spent. We're gonna spend $4 million on the Fourth Street project. So our reserves are gonna go down. But I still expect us to earn more interest than the 300,000, while we've already probably earned more interest in 2024.
Just because of what the feds are doing right now, and then there's talk of it, maybe not changing as drastically over the next, you know, however many months.
Yeah, it's just important to know that going into 2025, we're not gonna have the reserve levels that we have now. And we're also, I mean, that's a year and a half out. I will recommend that we budget interest rates around 3% instead of 5%, because we know interest rates are probably gonna come down a little bit. But yes, that will certainly factor into it, and it will fill some of the gap.
Okay, because I don't know, it might be maybe 600, 700,000 more than what we had budgeted potentially.
Yes, and during the reforecast, we will, we will change the 2024 budget number to a reforecast number, which will inform what we think we're gonna start 2025 with. And that's where we'll start budgeting, whatever we think will be in the bank as of January 1st, 2025.
Yep, thank you.
Are we required to have so much in reserve?
We're not required. We do have a reserve policy. The reserve policy for the General Fund is a minimum of 16% and a maximum of 30%. And, you know, we strongly try to stay towards that 30%. And what that does for us is if in the middle of the year, some revenue falls off drastically, we have time to correct before, you know, we're in dire need. And right now, at the end of 2024, we're projected to be slightly below 30%.
Revenues affect your bond rating too.
Yes, yes, the reserves do impact our bond ratings. So keeping them around 30% is a pretty good standard for municipalities our size. And it is recommended by Moody's that we keep a fairly decent reserve.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, well, congratulations.
I love that you did this in February, and you give us like, reading material like this.
I love that you did this in February and you give us like reading material like this.
Yeah, those are yours to keep, yeah. And if you, and if you come across any questions, let us know. And maybe we'll answer them in the next study session, because if you have questions, I'm sure everybody asks questions. Well, thank you very much.
June 22nd, if I'm not mistaken.
So we, yeah, we have the, we have the budget here, um, date. And, and, uh, the calendar that was in the commission agenda packet, and we can resend that out. Um, we're going to talk about CIP at a separate study session. And then just like we did revenue tonight, as part of this sort of new budget process, we're going to do an expense one, an expenditures, um, overview. Um, won't be as lengthy, uh, as this one, but, um, to just continue to try to get us ready for the, the budget discussion.
Yeah, this is great. Yeah, great preparation. Plenty of time.
Details, good. I appreciate that. Thanks, Paul.
This is additional weekend reading.
There you go.
Two or three times.
From here, we'll go ahead and move on to the consent agenda.
I move that we approve, uh, the claims from February 9th, 2024 through February 22nd, 2024, in the amount of $1,360,437. Net amount for payroll number three, effective February 9th, 2024, in the amount of $387,387.52. No police or fire pension.
Second.
All right, motion's been seconded. We'll begin, uh, voting with Commissioner Banner.
Aye.
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 Pass by zero. Go ahead and, uh, go around the room. Mr. Kramer?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
All right.
Friday evening, the, uh, the Performing Arts Center, the River City Community Players in the Performing Arts Center will present Into the Woods. It's a, it's a great combination of different fairy tales that you've all heard before. And from what I understand, it's a, it's a wonderful production of it. I would encourage everybody to go down and see it.
I attended the RTC alumni school, had a drill meet that they hosted, and they had 22 teams, um, from all over the region. They stayed in our hotels, they ate in our restaurants. And speaking of sales tax revenue, hopefully they boost those numbers for, um, for, uh, like every still February. So, um, it's just really neat to see people coming from all over to, to host, so that was a fun day.
Um, I just wanted to say we had a, I, I'm representing the St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee, and we had a, a, an Irish concert at Yiddel hunt the other night. It was sold out. And the Irish dancers came from Kansas City, and they were going to a national competition the next day, and they were awesome. Just a reminder that St. Patrick's Day, March 17th, will have a parade, uh, lineup is at noon, and the parade starts at one o'clock. Um, I think there's some confusing things because it, we do it differently on Sunday because of church. So we set it up a little bit later. So come down to the parade, or if you'd like to have an entry in the parade, please, uh.
When's the deadline for the sign up for the, for anybody interested in entering the parade?
We take them to the very end.
Okay, that's good.
We're, we're easy. It's good. Thank you.
Well, I just want to say thank God for allowing me to see another birthday. Yeah, thank, thank my sister Holly for the, for the goodies, and she gave me plenty enough candy to share with the commissions. Yeah, so I got plenty of candy to share with you all. But, uh, God bless and have a great week.
All right, and, uh, yeah, I had the privilege of, uh, listening to some of our state legislators, uh, last night. So that was a good, uh, meeting, little town hall. Appreciate that. Uh, like to say too, I think we're probably in the same, uh, state as a lot of, uh, cities in the state of Kansas this year with our budgets and what we've got ahead of us. And, uh, you know, I think as we look at everything, we're going to see changes in numbers because our economy's changing and people are making different decisions with their money. So, um, definitely be a, a dynamic year for sure. But wish everybody a good rest of your week, and, um, from there, we just need to have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second. Hall of Famer?
Aye.